Okay, we will call our meeting to order at 4:01 for October 24, 2023. Roll call vote, Sam?
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Soylu?
Here.
Trustee Barto?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
Next is the adoption of the agenda. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Wigan, seconded by trustee Crane. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do we have any community input items for closed session? No? Okay. We will soon move to closed session. The items are for A, conference with legal counsel, workers' compensation, claim number 510698; for B, conference with legal counsel, potential litigation, one case; for C, conference with labor negotiator; for D, public employee discipline dismissal, release, unemployment; and for E, public employee discipline dismissal, release, and employment, number 202311HR. The time is 4:03, and we will return to open session at 6:00 PM. Good evening. It is 6:01, and we are opening our open session portion of our board meeting tonight for October 24th. And it is 6:02. We are going to have our opening ceremonies led by our student board member, Peyton Volvan.
Please stand for a moment of reflection. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Our pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We also had one readout from closed session. In closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the resignation agreement and general release number 202311HR, and the vote was seven ayes and zero noes. And next, we have the adoption of the minutes from October 3, 2023. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by trustee Crane, seconded by trustee Wigan. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
The vote was six zero, and the motion carries. Now we have item 10, introduction of new staff. Dr. Ser.
So President Anderson, board member, Superintendent Smith, cabinet, and esteemed guests, it's our honor to have Ms. Kimberly Maxwell come up. So Ms. Kimberly Maxwell, come on up tonight. Our new principal at Woodland Elementary School. We are pleased to announce her as a principal at Woodland Elementary School. She has vast experience with over 20 years of serving in many positions, both close to us and a little bit of a distance away in California. She's worked in many districts as a teacher, including assignments in LA Unified, Orange Unified, an international French English school, and as a TOSA and intervention teacher here in Newport Mesa. As an administrator, she's held many assignments, including serving in districts Compton Unified as an early childhood program specialist, in Anaheim Hills as an assistant campus director, in Capo Unified as an elementary assistant principal, and also the coordinator of Universal Pre-K in Capo. Prior to becoming the coordinator of Universal Pre-K in Capo, she served as principal at Don Juan Avila Elementary School. As principal, she worked with her staff to implement MTSS intervention practices, as well as a PBIS program earning gold level recognition. She is known to develop relationships and collaborate with teachers, parents, and community members to help create optimal learning environments for students and a very supportive educational community. Ms. Maxwell's expertise and experience are an excellent fit for the needs and focus of Woodland Elementary School. As a past NMUSD TOSA, Kim is super excited to join us here in Newport Mesa and lead Woodland Elementary School. So, welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Jose Montano.
We'd also like to welcome Dr. Jose Montano, and so excited to host him here with his family. Thank you. He joins us as the principal at Whittier Elementary School, where he comes as a bilingual educator for over 25 years, 11 as a sitting elementary principal. He was last in Desert Sands, where he was principal at Jackson Elementary School, and he's developed two dual immersion programs that also combine STEM and other issues. He has a deep issue and not, I'm sorry, he has a deep knowledge of instruction. And it's all passion for students and families. We know that. I am so sorry. He has a deep knowledge of instruction and programs, including GLAD, the Guided Language Acquisition and Design for Students, particularly English learners, multilingual learners, AVID, which is the program we've seen before, the Achievement via Individual Determination, and PBIS, the Positive Behavior Interventional and Supports. We're so excited that he's joining us. He has such a calm, collaborative demeanor. He is a leader known for that, and he's respectful, kind, and inclusive in the environments he builds and the way he creates opportunities for students and staff. We're very excited to offer him. Welcome him. He's already been offered. Good Lord. Sorry. To welcome him into the district.
Yes, I was able to meet with Dr. Montano his first week, and it was a lovely visit. I'm very excited that we have him.
And we do want to say hello and thank you to his family for joining him here tonight as well. Yay. Thank you for allowing him to join us and be so dedicated.
And next, we have our student board member reports. Trustee Crane?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are represented by Corona Del Mar High School, Early College High School, and Costa Mesa High School. And on the dais is Peyton Volvan, who is the representative from Corona Del Mar High School. And she, the topic of the evening is, "With college applications due this fall, what college and career activities and events are taking place at your campus that are helping seniors prepare for post-graduation?" Also, please share two specific campus highlights. Peyton?
Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Anderson, and esteemed board members. My name is Peyton Volvan, and I'm proud to represent Corona Del Mar High School. With college applications in full swing, Corona Del Mar provides many services to help make this time less stressful. As a senior myself, I understand the full severity of stresses that originate from applications. Seniors have the opportunity to participate in our essay nights throughout the week, in which teachers and advisors open up their classrooms to help edit essays before submission. We have a multitude of opportunities where colleges are able to come on campus and answer questions for their specific schools. Whether this is in the form of our college fair or college visits before, during, and after school, there are many opportunities to hear from different schools across America. This is coordinated by our college and career coordinator, Mama Mary, who acts as a key resource to the students. We're also in the beginning stages of our district-wide senior projects, which focus on future career paths and gives us a behind-the-scenes look at each mentor's line of work. For my two campus highlights, I want to first highlight our Battle of the Bay dance and our annual rivalry Battle of the Bay football game against Newport Harbor. To begin, we had a very successful dance at Bowers Museum with games, photography, music, and treats. We had over half the student body go, and even some of our special ed program kids were able to come out and have fun. It was super cool to see peers from different grades and classes come out to have a blast at our first dance of the year. Now to move on to our rivalry football game. Every year, the feud between Newport Harbor and us creates a competitive but respectful group of games for every sport, football being our biggest. This past Friday, we went head-to-head to determine which side of the Bay is better. At CDM, we started off our game day with a fantastic Star Wars rally, which will be online, so I encourage everyone to take a look at that when they have the chance. The event highlighted many of our groups on campus to perform in front of the student body, ranging from our special ed needs program with the Sea King Spirit Squad, and our drumline, all of our, and all girls singing groups called the Triads, our dance team, orchestras, and last but definitely not least, our pep squad. My ASB tech committee made some of the best videos that I've seen in a while, so it's a definite must-watch once they come out on YouTube. They include introducing our very own ASB, and also had fun cameos from Dr. Bolton, Newport Harbor's principal. Later in the day, we got ready for the big game. Both sides of Davidson Field were sold out, with a total attendance of over 5,000 people with the game being livestreamed online for those who didn't get a ticket. The game was super fun, being a head-to-head match with Harbor, winning by one point. Though it may not have been the outcome we at CDM were hoping for after 10 years of consecutive winning, it was an amazing community event for all of Newport Beach. The second campus highlight I want to talk about was the creation of the Interfaith Inclusion Council. CDM administration created the Interfaith Inclusion Council in response to the unfortunate locker room incident that happened on the campus the other week. I, CDM's ASB president, was fortunate enough to be a part of this group, along with community members, religious leaders, district personnel, site administration, CDM staff, school site council members, and students. The council was made to come together as a community to work to eliminate hate and promote inclusivity. As a group, we determined where acts like this start and how to educate students to positively affect our communities, so these don't happen again. We talked about the importance of early education on sensitive topics to broaden the understanding of these issues and promote a healthy conversation about them. In these discussions, the takeaway was a resounding conclusion from the students and supporting members to focus on early exposure and education to the wide varieties and unique cultures, religions, and life experiences that students bring to our schools from their various walks of life and worldviews. In taking these steps, the Interfaith Inclusivity Council looks to eliminate hate and ignorance and help facilitate creating an inclusive campus. Thank you.
Thank you, Peyton. Next, we will hear from Victor Jimenez from Early College High School.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Anderson, the board, and esteemed guests. Today, I will be sharing a little bit about how our school helps out our seniors after graduation, and I will also be sharing with you two campus highlights that occurred since the last time I was on this podium. First, I just want to mention that we have the best counselor of all time, and she is readily available for all of our students that need to meet with her. Because of our small size, meetings are planned and attended without having to wait a large amount of time, and Ms. Gulini can assist seniors throughout their entire school year as needed, and she can answer any questions that they have. The main thing that I would like to present on that helps our seniors after graduation is our special focus on the senior project, which all of our 12th graders undergo. The project consists of several different factors that help seniors explore different career paths. First, seniors must find a mentor that is in their field that they are interested in. When they have found their mentor, they can meet with them in order to obtain a better understanding about the career that they might want to pursue. In total, seniors will spend 15 hours with their mentor, and they will have to sign a paper to verify that they've done these hours, and then in their second semester, they will write an in-depth essay explaining what they have learned about their career. And at the end of the year, they have to present their career to a panel. This enables kids to explore different careers, or one career of their choosing, and really figure out what exactly they're getting into. The interesting thing about this topic is that many students absolutely love the career they chose, and others despise it a lot. And the great thing about this is that students that despise the careers that they picked have essentially saved a lot of their college time, because they do not have to go through different majors and then discover that they don't like it, and then have to go back and repeat the process. So with the help of Ms. Gulini and all of our staff at Early College, they make this experience seamless, and it is really a great opportunity for all of our students to explore a career of their choosing. And now, I would like to talk about our first campus highlight, which was the Black Light Dance that we hosted this month. The thing that's special about this dance is that even though we hold it outside, there are still walls with designs that basically give the illusion of a dance room. And the way this is done is that ASB splatter paints some posters and cleverly hangs them up before the dance to kind of create the illusion of a room. In the posters, there was a lot of glow-in-the-dark paint, which kind of enabled the black light to make it shine, along with all of the outfits from the students, which were very clear. They all looked purple. It was funny. But this year's theme was Supernova, so we also had like a lot of spaceships and little aliens that were painted on the posters. And PTSA made fantastic contributions that helped provide snacks and pizza for all our students at this dance. So overall, it was very smooth, and everyone had a blast. And for my final campus highlight, I would like to include all the new additions on our school grounds. First, on October 14th, our second school mural on campus was painted. This design was created by one of our own students, and many of our other students volunteered to help paint this design in order to gain community service hours and have a nice experience with their peers. The mural reads "Live Life in Color" and includes various designs, such as a guitar, ping-pong paddle, math symbols, and many other things. This vibrant piece of art has made a great addition to our campus. The other addition that we had on our campus was our Positivity Rock Garden. This came from the ideas of our PTSA parents, and these rocks were designed by both parents and students alike. PTSA came onto our campus for two Fridays, and they had students paint the rocks at lunch, which they could include any positive message that they liked. And they also came out to our campus over the weekend, so more students had the opportunity to paint rocks as well. I personally made one that says "You rock." This rock garden is a great addition to our campus, because it has a lot of positive and encouraging messages that leave our students feeling very encouraged as they pass our rock garden. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor. Next is India Harrington from Costa Mesa High School.
Hello there. It's good to see you all. With college applications coming up, there are many resources and services that students can utilize for support and information. The first one is our College and Career Center. Through our College and Career Center, students can find out about different schools and majors, as well as different paths and careers for after-high school. The College and Career Center will host admissions officers from a bunch of different schools, some of them being UC Berkeley, Chapman, Boston University, USC, and several others. The College and Career Center is open almost any time throughout the school day if you ever had questions or need advice on anything regarding career plans or colleges. Another resource is our AVID elective, which is there to support and guide students throughout high school with the overreaching goal of the student hopefully getting into college. In AVID, students will take field trips to visit several colleges and receive academic and social support throughout their four years of secondary education. There are also several resources for students who don't want to go to college right after high school. CMHS provides information and support for those who want to join the workforce or the military. Even for those who are unsure of the path they want to take in the future, there's many assets in which they can help navigate their future. As for two specific campus highlights, the first one would have to be our Spirit Week leading up to Battle of the Bell, which is this week. Our homecoming and Battle of the Bell football game is this Friday, so over the weekend, ASB students came in and just decorated the school in posters. We put them all over the wall, all over like the whole quad floor, and the wall ones did fall down when it rained, but the quad floor ones are still up, and they're very cool. It's a really nice change of scenery and kind of makes it feel, yeah, just interesting to see something different. So I think all the students really liked that. And ASB has been getting a lot of compliments because of that. Another highlight on our campus is the numerous student-led clubs we have. They're a really good way of getting students involved and helping everyone find their people. It's really cool to hear about what the different clubs are doing, like Key Club doing service events, Blood Drives with the Red Cross Club, and the Environmental Science Club is going camping. With all the clubs at our school, everyone's able to find one that they like, and through those clubs, meet people with similar interests. Overall, the school year's been going really well. It's really nice to see the student body have things to look forward to and things that help us come together and unify. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have our CSCEA representative, Eleanor Rebar.
Good evening, President Anderson, School Board, West Smith. I'm Eleanor Rebar. I'm the CSCEA treasurer. Our interim president, Amy Ching, could not be here tonight, but she wanted to recognize two important classified employee departments. Last month, on September 19th, was National Information Technology Professional Day. Our IT department technical staff ensures our students, staff, and district systems run smoothly and help provide a consistent platform for student success. October 16th to 20th was National School Bus Safety Week. Our bus drivers have special licenses, training, and knowledge of the law regarding school buses. Their training and dedication allows NMUSD children to travel safely to their destinations every day. We thank them all for their hard work. The bus drivers and staff will be having their Halloween walk this Tuesday, October 31st, from 9:30 to 10:30, and we know many of you have attended this special heartwarming event. It's so fun to see, and they look forward to all the participation this year. Tonight, on the board agenda, item 18C, we acknowledge that Susan Meyer will be the CSCEA Chapter 18 reappointment to the Personnel Commission, and we thank Susan for her years of service and support to classified staff employees. And to add to Peyton's little message about the Battle of the Bay, I attended. It was a mob, and it was 10 years since the last Newport Harbor win. It was close, and it was one point after that was missed. So that was, it could have gone into overtime. So I enjoyed my time at the game.
Thank you, Eleanor. Next is NMFT President Rhonda Reed.
Good evening, President Anderson, trustees, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and guests here tonight. I want to say thank you to the district and Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, Sarah Jockman.
Jockum.
Jockum. For the time and attention given to the numerous needs and concerns of our special education teachers. NMFT is inundated with outreach for help from these educators. Some of them, quite frankly, are at a breaking point. Many of them are going on three years without the appropriate and necessary staffing. Some are missing the appropriate staffing for instructional aides and behavioral intervention specialists necessary to provide adequate classroom management and proper instruction. While they are short-staffed, there seems to be an ever-increasing amount of cumbersome clerical work put on their plate. I appreciate the staff, the steps, rather to alleviate some of this by the recent announcement that special education teachers no longer need to provide the documentation for medical billing. And I'm looking forward to further resolutions that are to come and the relief for these very dedicated, highly skilled, and hard-working educators. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have community input on non-agendized items. Clark Wigan?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or her time to another person. By Order Brown Act, section 54954.2, the board will take no action nor have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent's comments.
Thank you. First, we have Kristin Carlin.
Hello, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Kristin Carlin, a former Newport Mesa teacher and a current parent at Kelly Brook and Mesa Middle School. There are two things I'd like to share tonight. First, I've noticed that any meeting I attend where Dr. Smith is there, he ends them the same way. It's the same four words and a question, which is, "What gives you hope?" So tonight, I'd like to answer that question, and I'd like to say thank you. I'd like to thank the board members and cabinet for doing a remarkable job of owning the things that need to be improved in Newport Mesa and taking time to listen to the parents and school sites regarding what is and what isn't working. I recently attended the Parent Advisory Committee meeting, the Gate Parent meeting, and most recently, the Facility Planning Meeting. Each of these meetings were so well-attended, and the engagement was remarkable. It makes me proud to be a Newport Mesa parent. Something that really resonated with me from the advisory meeting was when Dr. Smith took the time to really listen to a parent, and there were lots of different views in the room, and to also explain that when we get to these complex and difficult situations, that it's also really important to accept and honor the fact that we don't all always agree. And that was just a powerful moment where we all got to have mutual respect with mutual goals. The other thing I'd like to share with you tonight is the answer to the question of "What gives me hope?" My history with Newport Mesa goes back to 2004. I've served as a student teacher, a substitute teacher, a classroom teacher, a parent, and PTA president. And what gives me hope is that I see our district doing a solid job of identifying, discussing, and solving the current issues that we face. I see parents and I see school personnel participating respectfully and productively. If you think back to this time last year, I was up here with a much different message, and things have since changed. I feel heard, and for that, I'm super grateful. I realize that in an organization as large and as diverse as ours is, we will always have a very long issues list. That being said, our current level of professionalism and transparency and commitment are what give me hope. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have former trustee Charlene Matoye.
Thank you. Good evening, board, President Anderson, Dr. Smith, guests, and cabinet. I'm here tonight as a Personnel Commissioner with an update, did-it-did-it, from classified employees. Administrative Director Kristin Clark asked if I would come and give this little positive note of what's going on over in classified. She has been working with Dr. Elsie Simonofsky in special ed, and they have identified that we have 314 special ed instructional aid positions, including behavior analysts, as well as regular special ed. So there's, my, work it down. So altogether, 314. As of our last Personnel Commission meeting, 292 of those positions have been filled. Then I talked to her today and said, "Okay, I'm going to the meeting. Any updates?" Yes, we've offered nine more positions. So that means there's only 13 unfilled positions in a position that countywide and statewide is so difficult to fill. So congratulations to the Special Education Department, Dr. Elsie Simonofsky, and Kristin Clark, because she said, Kristin said, "Recruitment and communication between special ed and classified has made this happen." So we have both of our departments, Mrs. Lee Olson is over there too, so we're just booming with news. Additionally, our next project is nutrition, I love it, Nutrition Services Assistant One. That's our elementary cafeteria people that we love to death, who know every child in the school. And that's our most recent challenge to fill. But because we have quality applicants and our staff at the school sites have worked hard to hire, we offered seven jobs to seven out of the seven applicants that applied. We're not stopping, we're keeping to go. So the good news is classified employees are working hard, and classified employment is working hard to fill all the spots. Thank you very much for your time, and it's always nice to have a piece of good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are Thank you. Those are both great updates about nutrition staff and our special ed assistants. We have another one, and I just wanted to clarify what is on our agenda and what is our board norm about items that are within our subject matter jurisdiction. So if it's not something that we have jurisdiction over, we can't really do anything about it, and City Council might be a good place for folks to go. So the next person is Rudy Kraus.
Okay, the last time I came here, I talked to you about COVID science, the most advanced in the world that I'm the author of, the anaerobic science of COVID, that all the top doctors and scientists in the world don't have a clue about. So they're going down a rabbit hole that leads to nowhere. And I also said that the vaccinated are the most dangerous people in the world because of the trifecta power pyramid, the black racist agenda, the homosexual agenda, the 76 enablers, and that is you guys.
Sir, we do not--
The US education system, please don't interrupt me.
We don't tolerate discrimination in this room. You're not talking on a matter that we have jurisdiction over, and I will not--
Okay, I want my time. I want my full time. You're taking my time from me. I'm allowed to speak about things you don't nothing about.
It's not our jurisdiction.
It doesn't matter. I'm giving you information that you need to know about the graphene oxide that's in the vaccinated. Now, can I continue?
It's not acceptable to use discriminatory language in our meeting.
What discriminatory language? You're wasting all my time. I want a minute back. Do you know about the graphene oxide that's in the vaccinated?
This is not the place for that.
It is, too. You guys jabbed, what, about 20 million kids in the United States, the future generations of America. Do you know what an atrocity that is?
Sir, no, thank you.
Can I have my time?
Our subject matter jurisdiction is not your book.
My book is my evidence where I come to you and talk to you about what you guys are doing--
We're not doing that.
--as the enablers of the agenda.
We're not doing that. We don't have a COVID vaccine mandate. We are not in charge of any of that.
But you did mask all the kids and encouraged them to mask, which was the wrong thing to do. Yes or no?
Sir, we're done.
Okay, you didn't even give me a chance to speak on the subject matter.
You just came at our last meeting, and you said the same thing.
No, I didn't. I'm going to talk about the nanotechnology in the vaccine. There's two elements to it.
You may talk about that. Do not talk about race. Thank you.
I'm not talking about race.
You did.
I talked about the trifecta power pyramid and the deconstruction of the United States. Don't you know about that?
We will give you one minute.
No, no, I should get a minute and a half. I've been--
No, sir. No, it's not our subject matter jurisdiction.
Okay, 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 fine. Fine, I'll talk about one minute, right?
Yes.
I got 21. How about a minute and 19 seconds?
No, you have one minute.
Okay, start it then. Okay, so what we're going to talk about is Milecandelarian. He's the guy who invented graphene oxide. He got a Nobel Prize for it. That's what's in the vax. He invented it in 2015. It's nanotechnology. It is 1,000 times more highly conductive than the silicone and silicone chips. It's really fascinating material. I can build inventions for DARPA with it. I can build a battery for Elon Musk that's only 500 pounds with this. That's 1,000 times more electrically conductive. This is what Candelarian said about the jab. The more shots and boosters the imbeciles get, the quicker they will turn into fertilizer. This is the guy who invented the graphene oxide that composes 95% of the vaccine that the vaxxers shot in. Now, you have to understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have superintendent's comments.
Just wanted to make sure that we chimed in as well on the importance of the work of the Personnel Commission, getting those folks in the classroom. I think the Federation spoke to the importance of providing supports in the classrooms. Our students need and deserve every opportunity they have to be successful, and the adults are the ones that make that possible. So to the Federation for your folks doing the work, CSEA, and then the Personnel Commission, thank you for filling those spots. And the district is here, it's a commitment to improve our engagement and communication, to listen more. And so to the parents that have appreciated that approach, just expect more of that, because that's the board's priority and our direction moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have community input on agendized items. Clerk Wiegand? Oh, no, we don't have any. Never mind. All right, next, we have Ms. Shields and Dr. Torres' report on 2022-2023 Smarter Balance Assessments.
Thank you. I'm going to ask George Knights to come on up, who will be leading the majority of this. I want to thank George and his team for all their work to put this information in front of us, to put this information in front of the principals and teams, to think about how we get better, think about where we did well, what we do more of, what we do less of, and really evaluate the way we do our work. I think the first slide is mine, right? We have some beautiful pictures to set the stage. And we just want to remind everyone that this is one single source of data, so it has a lot of value because it does norm us against the rest of the state. It gives us relative information about how we're doing it with other districts in the state. It also helps us think about how well students are mastering standards. It is one example of how well students are mastering standards, but we look at two things, bright spots and glimmers, similar to the statement earlier about what gives us hope. Where are we doing things that are going right? We know we do work with human beings, and we know the best way to motivate change is through positive reinforcement and encouragement, and do more of what's working and do less of what might be not giving us the outcomes that we're intending. And then we also do look at spotlight areas and think about, what is this telling us? What is this reflection for us as a system? We have so many hard-working people in the district, from classrooms to those who support those in the classrooms, and of course, our students and families, that we know this reflects effort. We want to make sure that our investments of time, energy, really humanity, are paying off in the ways we intend for students and families.
Okay. Good evening, members of the board, President Anderson, Dr. Smith, Samantha. I'm here to give you the facts, otherwise known as data, and meaningful information, which I prefer. My job isn't so much to make comments about the data, other than to say one thing about this board, that I've been very impressed with your passion for data. We spent some time in the last couple months when some of the preliminary data came in, and I really appreciate your heart for data, and it makes my little data heart pitter-pact. So, thank you. But one thing you said to me was to, you know, not sugarcoat it. So this will be a presentation of some really good data that we have in our district, also some flat data and some ugly data, but stuff we need to see, and here at this meeting, in this public meeting, you will get to see it. So let's look just first at some general conditions of testing. So we tested 8,800 students this year from March to June. And the grade levels that we tested is 3 through 8 and 11, but we also tested in science, which is data that you'll get to see here tonight as well. That's only 5th grade, 8th grade, and 11th grade, and some 12th graders that didn't take it in 11th grade. Okay, so it's pretty much the entire district. First of all, our ELA, Smarter Balanced, we were pretty flat. It's 0.2% of a percentage point in district overall growth from last year to this year. I'll dig into that a little bit deeper later. In math, we were about a half a percent for district overall growth over last year, and again, we'll dig into it a little bit later. Probably the most compelling data that we have is our elementary growth, that every grade level in both ELA and math grew, with the exception of 5th grade, which had almost a percent decline. But that's pretty remarkable, that so many grade levels grew. 3rd grade grew almost 6%, 5.89% over last year, and elementary fixed cohorts. So these are students, the same students, and I'll dig into that later, but in all three of the tracked cohorts, we had growth. We'll talk about that in a minute with the bigger graphs. Middle school math had almost a 1.5% growth over last year, and the 6th grade cohort was over, is 5.5% increase over last year. So there's some good overall highlights. Let's look a little bit deeper. So in math, so always green represents math, and we had a 47.5%-- yeah, in 2022 and in 2023. It's growth, not a whole ton of growth, but we had almost a half a percent growth. This is grade level results. So when we look at the grade levels, we see up arrows for 3rd, 4th, 6th, 7th, and 8th. So not so bad in some of the grade levels. Some of the grade levels were low. 8th grade was 0.2%. But we had 2.48% in 7th grade. We declined in 5th grade, and we declined in 11th grade. When we look at middle school, we had some growth, an increase of 1 and almost a half percent. And 7th grade did most of the heavy lifting with 2 and almost a half percent. And 8th grade, pretty flat. For the ELA results for overall, 58.61, and last year, and 58.81, so less than 2.2% growth. So that's flat as well. This is ELA elementary results, so the overall results was a 2.5% increase. So this, again, is a bright spot. And in the grade levels, we almost had a 6% growth in grade 3, which a ton of investment has been made by this board in that grade level. So early literacy is a key function of what we do in this district, and it's paying off. We see 1.81% growth in 4th grade, small growth, 3/100ths of a percent in 5th grade. That's the definition of flat. And in 6th grade, 2 and almost 3/4% growth. So here's those fixed cohorts I was talking about. So these are the same, almost 1,058 kids, and they are the same kids in each of the cohorts. So in the 4th grade cohort, they went up. In the 5th grade cohort, they went up. And up in the 6th grade cohort by 5 and 1/4%. So same kids, we look at that, and we say they're growing, and that's the consistency that we're after, that they grow, and the same kids grow, and the programs grow would be ultimate. So in secondary, our results were a decrease of 2.5% in ELA for overall, 7th, 8th, and 11th. And we had a decline in each of those categories, in some cases, a pretty steep decline in 11th grade. This is our challenge area, and we'll talk to you a little bit about that from the curriculum folks, Mike and Gabe doing elementary. So ELA, this is eight-year results. Just to give you an idea of the track that we were on. So in eight years, we had, and I'll explain 11th grade in a second, but we had reasonable growth over those eight years, all the way to 2021, which that's just 11th grade because 7th and 8th grade didn't take the Smarter Balance test that year. But we did in 11th grade so that they could meet the early admittance program that Cal State and the junior colleges have. So there was a decline afterwards, but you can see we were on the right track, and I believe we will correct that. So the net increase was 1 and almost a half percent. It's still below what your target was for the 2019 pre-pandemic results, but at least we were on the right track, and we need to get back there. So this is science. So we put science in purple, so everything purple is science. That was a pretty flat growth. It wasn't a whole ton. It was a 0.1% growth, and that's increase. It's not much. Grade level growth, negative 2, almost 3/4% growth there, and almost half in 11th grade. So elementary went down a little bit, but middle and high increased. Overall, for the district, it's also a pretty flat increase. So when we look at the schools in general, so 59% of elementary ELA, so 13 of 22 schools grew from over last year. Then Title I schools, 6 of 10, so 60% of those schools grew from over last year. And then these are the schools, we had 23%, 5 of the 22 elementary schools got back to their spring 2019. And that's that target that you put out for them. In math, a little bit less. We had 11 of 22 schools grow. Title I, this is a good bright spot. 80% of the schools, 8 of 10, Title I schools grew last year over, this year over last year. And then this is a tough spot, so 36% of the schools exceeded their 2019 scores for that target. In secondary, 3 of 9 grew from last year, and Title I schools, only 1 grew. Schools exceeding that target that you set, 2 of 9 in math, same story, 3 of 9. Title I, 1 of 5, and for all of them, getting back to the target, it's 11%. So that's the hardest part of this presentation, by the way. Those were not scores that we hoped for. So elementary school site spotlights. So here's some amazing data about individual schools. So Ray, when I was here 14 years ago, I presented a board presentation where Ray had 7% proficient or exceeded in math. Ray, this year, for all that we have that we can show, growth, growth from baseline, growth from the target in the spring, and growth from over last year, they have far exceeded. It really is remarkable, the turnaround in Ray. When we look at Anderson, just consistency of our highest-level school, they're the only school in the district that has scored 80% or more in the Smarter Balance for both ELA and math every single year. College Park, for a Title I school, but they are also the only school in the district that has had consistent growth ever since the start of the Smarter Balanced. So we'd love to see that. We'd love to see it growing every year. It may not be enough. It may not be where we want them to be. We think we can do better, but we'd like to see them grow, and all three of these schools have done a fantastic job growing. Kaiser this year grew almost 4.5% over last year, and Victoria had 27% growth since the target spring. So they're way over that target. So this is fantastic for these schools. Secondary, early college, is the only school that has over 90%, and they've done this three times in the last four years at a high school. This is remarkable data. Enson grew 9.2% from baseline over in math, so that's green, that's math. And 7th grade overall is about 2.5% above from last year. Now, nothing is understandable until you see context of this data, and although I say flat, a lot of districts in our county were also flat. But the headline here is that we have outperformed both the state and the county average. And I would also say that the context of other unified school districts, so we don't compare ourselves to high school districts or elementary school districts, we compare ourselves to the other unified, and we've done that even before I got here. But that box represents Newport Mesa, and here's how it rolled out. So oftentimes, we see the typical folks way on the higher end, and then we pretty much compete in this general area. And if you look, it's tenths of points difference. There is not much difference between Newport Mesa and Garden Grove and Saddleback. Even Tustin, sometimes, we trade positions over the last eight years that I've been doing these presentations. So we sit at about the same place, and so does everyone else in the county. So that context is important to understand this data in general. A lot of people struggled, including some of the-- A lot of people struggled, including some of the dual districts that are the highest Same story here. We may, you know, flip flop with Garden Grove, but this is the same story for math. The box gets a little higher here because when you look at growth over the entire length of eight years of Smarter Balance testing, Newport Mesa has this rank, fourth in growth. Garden Grove, Orange, Santa Ana, and Newport. And yes, Santa Ana is a lot further to grow, but Newport Mesa, I believe, outperforms here when you look at the county context. It's notable to see some of the schools that generally perform pretty high have negative scores in both ELA and in math. But again, Newport Mesa is doing pretty well when it comes to the lesson in math, but everybody else kind of had some struggle, but we continue to grow and that's what we want over the long haul. So I'm just going to give over to Mrs. Shields and she'll go from here and I will push the button.
Thank you. We also think it's really important to understand who we are as a district and how we compare. And I really appreciate how George and his team include the relative comparisons because it is important to see how are we faring as we look at other districts and their growth rates and their performance rate. I'm not sure why it went black. And so the next slide shows our demographic relative to our county comparison districts. Again, it's really important, particularly looking at the diversity, which is one of our strengths and something we're very proud about and how we differ from a lot of other districts where compared to readily, we do have different student populations. That's important to think about when we talk about how we meet their needs, what we do, and how we expect rates of growth. One of the things that's important from this data, again, being one source, understanding that the test, it's different students every year at the grade levels. George and his team do a great job with the matched cohort so we can actually watch how the same students do year over year. But certainly from the data, we look at fifth grade and there is a curiosity about what's going on. We don't have the scores and the growth rates we'd like to see. We did see, was it Kaiser? There was one school with a great fifth grade, oh no, it was Victoria, I'm sorry. Victoria with a very high growth rate in fifth grade. So it's about being curious and exploring what's going on in other areas, knowing that it's different students, many times it's even different teachers from year to year. But is there something in the curriculum? Is there something about the way we pace? How do we really get curious and make sure that fifth grade students over time are getting everything they need and the fifth grade teachers are getting the support materials they need? Next, please. Elementary science, you know, we do have science specialists. We are undergoing this year a new adoption and we're in the process of that. So really thinking about how, what is the clarity we need on what, what do specialists do? What's in the curriculum? What happens during the day with regular grade level teachers? Really just being curious about that and having clear expectations and standards and the materials, training, and supports that teachers need to do their best. Secondary English Language Arts, as George mentioned, that's definitely an area where we really have to unpack with our professionals in the classroom. What is it that we need? What's missing in the, for grade level standard instruction and that demonstration of mastery? Again, this is one test. As students get older, I think they kind of have cracked the code that the test might not mean much to them. And so we do have to make sure that we are looking at student work as a complete picture for mastery and not a single test score, but it is important to know and note. And then math. And we are also in the process of a new elementary math adoption process. We know, as George mentioned, what the investment in early literacy has looked like. What does it look like in early mathematics and numeracy? What are the types of things and interventions we can do to ensure what we are learning and have learned in the way we're approaching literacy, we can do for numeracy as well. But we don't want to end with just the data because again, to go back, hope is what matters and where we're going, because data just is, as George said. It's actually how we respond to data that's really important to us as an organization and important to the professionals and the families and students we serve. And so to end with hope, we welcome our curriculum experts and department, secondary and elementary, Dr. Mike Shaka and Gabe Delvia.
President Anderson, members of the board, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and guests, thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about what we're doing in our PK-12 continuum to support all of our students. At the elementary level, there's a really neat thread that has started over the past couple of years where we're looking at tools for something that you'll hear Dr. Shaka refer to, which is eliciting and responding to student thinking. And specifically at the elementary level, what we're talking about is a tool called Thinking Maps. So in Thinking Maps, one of the real goals is helping students organize their ideas. As we know, you know, thinking takes a tremendous amount of energy and for children, it oftentimes is difficult for them to even understand what do all these ideas mean. So as they're reading complex text, something that happens at all levels, the Thinking Maps help them organize the information from the text so they can access it and refer to it later. It also helps them plan their written work. So for children, a blank page can be very overwhelming. And when it comes to asking children to write about something they've read, it's much more easy for them to access their ideas if they've actually organized them in a way that makes sense. There are actually eight different types of Thinking Maps and what you're seeing here is an example of one of them. So this is, the name that it's referred to is called a tree map, but more importantly, the Thinking Maps are actually referenced by the skill. So in this case, this is a map that's used for classifying main ideas and details. There's maps for comparing and contrasting. There's maps for sequencing events. So there's a variety of maps for, you know, part to whole analysis or whole to part analysis. And the beautiful thing about them is as students become familiar with them throughout elementary school, they become widely applicable in different content areas and they actually make choices. So rather than the teacher prescribing which map can be used, the students become familiar enough with them that they know how to look at the text and say, oh, I need to do a compare and contrast here. And so they actually become familiar with, it becomes kind of a meta process for them, this metacognitive idea. The whole purpose is to make their ideas visible. We know they've got great ideas in their head, but we want them to have a way to get those ideas out onto the page or into the dialogue in the room. So when they, students recognize each other's ideas in a meaningful way and in a format that is familiar to them, it leads to peer-to-peer dialogue, which helps them recognize that they each have value and they understand each other's perspective and they learn to respect different points of view. And very importantly, we know that meaningful feedback from a teacher is specific. And for teachers, sometimes it's hard to really understand exactly what the student is thinking. With this tool, with Thinking Maps, it makes it very specific and the teacher can target the feedback so that it does make more sense and it's more effective for our students. But the Thinking Maps themselves are just a tool. They are not the end. They're a means to an end. The purpose of Thinking Maps is to help our students develop their written work and to feature their voices in the room through oral presentations or peer-to-peer dialogue. That's what we ultimately want this to lead to because as they start to communicate their ideas and what they've learned in these different subject areas, they'll actually have much more meaning and it'll be much more powerful in the way they can express those ideas later. As students have developed these processes, it will build a strong foundation from our early elementary grades all the way through sixth grade as students move into secondary, where Dr. Shaka will talk further about this idea.
Thank you, Gabe. So with secondary education, we're really going to talk about two themes when we talk about what's next. The first is the idea of identifying pockets of excellence and transitioning them into systems of excellence. So that's one of our themes. And the next is this important of what Dr. Smith often refers to as our superpower, our PK-12 continuum and how we can harness the power of that. So first of all, I'm going to talk a little bit about horizontal alignment and that speaks to this idea of identifying pockets of excellence, making sure that we're consistent from classroom to classroom and subject areas so we can identify and implement those very best practices. Let's look at the data. Let's figure out what's working. Maybe it's a classroom teacher, maybe it's a department, maybe it's a school, and start to systematize the wonderful things that are happening there across the board so all students can benefit from those observations. The next one is benchmarks, identifying benchmarks in that horizontal experience so that we can not only identify areas that we need to continue to focus on, but also make benchmark data actionable. How do we get it in real time and be able to convert that into changes in the classroom that the students are going to benefit from? That's going to be a major area of focus in secondary. Curriculum adoptions will be a part of it. How can we use curriculum that promotes the high leverage instructional practices? So you'll hear more about that as our year goes by. And then shifting over to this idea of our TK-12 continuum. This really is our opportunity we want to focus on. How do we take what's happening in elementary and not only align that in middle school and high school, but make sure that we package the vocabulary the same? Because what we're, what we're realizing is, gosh, there's a lot of carryover and overlap already, but we haven't been able to, as effectively as we'd like to, indicate that we're talking about the same thing. You know, when you're looking at Gabe's slide about feedback and making thinking visible, well, that's eliciting and responding to student thinking, which is the verbage we're using in secondary. So how can we make those connections for our people so they realize when we're talking about this in elementary, we're doing the same thing and let's connect better in middle and high school? So some of the things we're doing, we're already starting those conversations. Recently, we had some of our sixth grade elementary teachers meet with middle school math teachers and start to talk about how they can better connect. And some of it was very lofty. Some of it was long-term goals about how we can really build some of those key skills, let's identify those skills that middle schools really hoping are focused on in middle school, in elementary, so we can build on those. But there was some low-hanging fruit, too. We were able to identify in this last meeting, we used different calculators. And we had to recreate this learning curve for the kids just because the buttons were different. And why not just get the same calculator? So sure enough, we made the transition. Now they have the same calculators and some time is regained to spend more time on mathematics. So we're finding that there's a lot of opportunities like that, just getting the right people in the room and having conversation. Our teachers do a fantastic job at starting to identify and collaborate and work together. So that's what you're going to see out of secondary as we move forward. Again, a lot of collaboration between elementary, middle, and high.
And then we just want to let the public know, of course, and anyone who's interested, this information is readily available to the public. It's available on Data Quest. There are lots of other sources as well. EdSource has a place where you can just punch in the district name and get all the information you need. So this is really readily available. And the last slide. We really recognized that it was incremental growth. There were areas of almost explosive acceleration, though, that we have to give credit to and we really have to look at and make sure we as a system are allowing that to replicate. And places where there were struggles, we really have to look at, are there ways we can move differently? You heard our curriculum department and our ed services about how we get the right people in the room, having those discussions and solving those problems and challenges and creating opportunities together. So while it is, of course, flatter than we want, it still was moving in the right direction and we do really want to applaud the efforts of our hard-working staff who every day are showing up and doing their moral obligation to serve students and their families. And we wouldn't have gotten here without their efforts. And our students and families who really, as Dr. Smith has asked us, to be as top district in the nation with the caliber of resources that we have, that is our goal and we expect to be able to share that in relative time. I'm going to give us a little runway, but we're going to get there. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Trustee Crane.
Okay, so I'm piqued by the fifth grade scores and how does staff even start to look at, okay, well, third grade went up and, you know, all the other grades, but then for some reason, fifth actually went down. So do you clinically just start looking at every school site, how fifth grade is being taught? Like, how do you tackle that?
Yes and no, because the grade levels change every year. It could be that students are rising just that grade level in that year. Their skills were less developed or more developed than the subsequent fifth grade year. So one of the things that as kind of an educational system, we really applaud in many ways are AP tests and students who master APs. And that is really being very specific about what you're teaching and very targeted to those standards. And so a lot of our discussions will be about the standards in fifth grade and are our materials the best to get our students there and what are our systemic supports if they're below where they should be or accelerated beyond where they should be? How do we support all children in reaching and excelling beyond kind of their grade level standards? So that's really where a lot of our conversation will be. One of the things about these type of tests, and you'll hear people refer to, it's an autopsy. It's already done. What Mike mentioned, Dr. Shaka mentioned about the benchmark assessments and they're coming to elementary as well, that is really critical, real-time data. I think many people oversimplify the work that teachers are doing every moment of every day and the multitude of complex decisions they have to make in the moment while they're watching and monitoring their class learning. What the benchmark data will do will give us some anchor points against standards. How are they doing about standards we have taught? How are they prepared for standards we are yet to teach? And what kind of materials and support grouping and other experiences do we need to create for students? So that's the type of lens we'll address in fifth grade and other grades as well.
Because then I'm thinking that same class, the fifth graders, how did they do in third grade then? You know, and then, oh, wait, that was COVID. So is that a factor?
I mean, you know, the interesting thing with students and data is they are human beings. And so lots, I mean, it could be someone didn't sleep well the night before and their mastery levels actually are much higher than what happened in that day. So that's why we, for an individual student, never make drastic decisions on one solo piece of data like that. It is part of a continuum. It is part of like a whole series of information to make important decisions. But as a dipstick to how we're doing, and I think really important that George and his team showed kind of relative to the rest of the county and relative to the rest of the state, honestly, when you look at headlines about test scores, everyone was flat. So we're not doing as well as we like, but we're not an outlier either. And we do have schools that are really knocking it out of the park. So one of the things we're creating are opportunities for those schools to share with us and share with others. What are, what's in that recipe? What is it that is doing so well?
What calculator are they using?
I mean, it's things as little as that to as big as how much time students are speaking in class, right? It's a whole continuum about production and we can control a lot of opportunities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I would also like to thank George and his team for the many beautiful visuals. We really love some infographics around here, as you can tell from our new presentation, and we really appreciate the time they spent. That is hard work. It looks beautiful, but it, there was a lot of effort behind that and we thank the entire team.
Thank you so much. All right. We are moving ahead to our informational items, 17A Legislative and State Budget Update. Do you have an update, trustee Murphy? No? All right. Move. Moving ahead to item 18, Consent Calendar. Do we have any questions or comments?
I wanted to make a quick comment. I wanted to comment on item 18B9, which allows the return of College and Career Night. I am so thrilled that we are bringing it back. And thank you to the team who put in the work to bring it back and coordinate with our partners, Harbor Council, PTA, Vitalink, and Coastline ROP. So very excited for that. Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Trustee Crane. Seconded by Trustee Murphy. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagon.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Okay, great. Six, zero, the motion passes. Number 19, Discussion Action Calendar, 19A. The reading and adoption of modifications to board policy. And we have a few items. We'll start with Ms. Torres, if you wanted to introduce whichever one you would like to talk about first.
Thank you. We have several board policies going forward this evening. And the board policies that focus on student conduct and our technology and telecommunications is what you're going to see this evening. We have come together to determine and discuss some of the challenges that we faced with our cell phone policies and usage. Thank you. And so we felt it was appropriate to bring forward to the board a modified policy and updated on our, I'm sorry, I called it technology, but it's mobile communication devices, to be able to support our school systems a little bit better as they deal with some of the social media and technology challenges that we're facing. Additionally, we have in front of you tonight our international exchange. And we just wanted to point our board in the direction to understand how we receive and accept international exchange students. We understand that they provide a tremendous value to the climate and culture of a campus. And our board policy this evening just highlights our desire to identify a number of students that we would accept into our ecosystem. And so those are the adjustments we have made for that policy.
Do we have any questions, comments? Did you get a chance to read these?
I guess I would just, the comments on the mobile device, communication devices. Thank you for this, specifically the elementary students, where we talk about no devices at all, including the smartwatches that I know have been causing some issues in classes going forward. So thank you for that. And yeah, that's the communication there. And then as an exchange student, as a former exchange student myself, I appreciate that. It's definitely valuable. So I appreciate having exchange students on our campuses and giving those opportunities to them.
Thank you.
Trustee Crane.
Actually, I wanted to hear from our student board member, if Peyton has any thoughts on the new policies relating to cell phones specifically or any other thing.
I just wanted to say that I actually really do like the policy, especially for the elementary and middle school students. I came from a school that had the same policy where cell phones were not allowed to be seen. They were supposed to be powered off and stored in a backpack or locker at all times. I thought that was really, really beneficial. So I think trying to enforce that, especially for our middle school and elementary students, will make the classrooms much more productive and really limit just like a lot of cheating and also distractions that happen in the classroom.
Cheating, you say?
That never happens.
Better insight.
Thank you for your opinion.
Anyone else? All right.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that it's a great policy. I'm so glad that we've updated it. I want to compliment the policy team on working very hard the last few months. You've been really updating a lot of much-needed policies. Some, I see like 2009, you know, it's like, okay, that was, you know, it's a few years. And so I really appreciate the effort because it's not easy. And it's very, you know, nitpicky. And thank you for doing the work.
Yes. It's also interesting to see things change, like the international exchange item. All righty, do we have a motion? Do you want to have any additional comments?
Just motion two.
Moved by Trustee Ursulou.
Seconded.
Seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Student board member Peyton Vovan.
Yes.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagon.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
I actually just wanted to read, I thought it was on the item, but I want to make sure that I'm saying it out loud for the record, what all of the policies were. So we approve policy 51318, the mobile communication device. Policy 61456, international exchange. Policy 5131, conduct. And our board bylaw, are we doing our board bylaw next? Is it part of it? It is a part of it, yes. Bylaw 92701, policy on public purposes for district distribution of tickets or passes. Let's hear a new one for us. All right. Next, we have 20, our resolution. It is Adopt Resolution Number 090123 to approve continued funding application with the California Department of Education for the state preschool program for the 2024-25 school year. Dr. Cert.
Yeah, so this is a resolution to certify the approval for the continued funding application to the Department of Education for eight state preschools. Those schools are College Park, Killiw Brook, Pollerino, Pomona, Ray, Sonora, Whittier, and Wilson. And the estimated reimbursable amount for the 24-25 school year will be in the amount of $4,911,963.
All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have any questions?
I'm to adopt the resolution as stated.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right. Moved by Trustee Crane, seconded by Trustee Ursulou. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagon.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Okay, six, zero, motion passes. Okay, 20B, Adopt Resolution Number 101023 to standardize district facility components for the designation of specific materials, products, things, or services on public works projects genetic, Inc. Mr. Trader.
So as you're aware, the district's been putting a lot of effort into safety. And with that, then, we've determined to make a standard for a platform that all of our hardware and software that supports surveillance cameras, electronic access controls, and intrusion detection. So we're here establishing a platform, a standard for a platform, so all of these different separate systems can talk to one another.
Wonderful. Do we have any questions?
I'm personally really looking forward to us having a comprehensive system that is interconnected. So thank you for taking this next step. And I think all of us are looking forward to having cameras on more campuses and around. So thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion? Do we have any questions? We'd like to make a motion.
So moved.
I seconded.
Moved by Trustee Wagon, seconded by Trustee Pearson. Roll call vote.
Trustee Anderson.
Yes.
Trustee Crane.
Yes.
Trustee Wagon.
Yes.
Trustee Pearson.
Yes.
Trustee Murphy.
Yes.
Trustee Ursulou.
Yes.
Trustee Bartow.
Okay, six, oh, the motion carries. And next, we have informal reports. Dr. Smith.
So had a great opportunity to meet with members of the State Board of Education and the California Department of Education last year about areas of concern. And one of our areas of concern was the way that they calculated and continue to look at chronic absenteeism. We were required by state law to protect our students and adults, and we took that requirement seriously. We know the living experiences of some of our families mean that when we quarantine one student, it impacts multiple families. So we follow the law and what's good for folks. And then we get punished for it. And we share that we would have had up to eight elementary schools, received California Distinguished Schools, if they hadn't changed the way they look at that. And this is something wholly within their control, and we urge them to rethink that. We can't go back in time and go to Disneyland where they have not the park, but to the hotel and receive the award. But we'd sure like to paint our buildings. We'll continue to advocate in that regard. But I think that that's important, that we have that many schools doing well in this district, even amidst the pandemic and the craziness there. It makes me think about this notion, and again, I spoke about this. We had a great event last week. Thank you to all the team in our community for the State of the Schools event. We talked about our progress and what we're doing and what our commitment is moving forward. And this notion that it's the opinion, right? People have opinions, they have rights to them. People use words like failing. In schools, we know what failing is. It's far below average, right? Being above average is, by definition, not failing. We look at our data, we look at our schools, we look at our progress. It's hard using the technical words failing to assign that to what we're doing. I also think it's disrespectful to the professionals in our classroom who are working really, really hard, to our students who are struggling every day to meet those high expectations, putting the time in. To use the word failing, I think is irresponsible, and I think it's inaccurate. Quite honestly, when you look at the data, and that being said, let's be honest. And I said this at the State of the Schools, we expect to be better. We expect to be the best school in, or school district, rather, in the state of California and this great country. Because our students deserve no less, right? That's what all of you in the audience tonight deserve and all of your colleagues. And until we get there, we're not stopping. We're not making excuses. We shared tonight some of the things that have to get better and the commitment that we will get better. The board challenged us with being better than we were in 2019. And we showed you, we have ways to go. And so that's where we are, that's where we're headed. We appreciate the progress. Progress is essential if you're going to reach those targets. We can disagree respectfully about the word failing. But as we apply it to schools and percentages, look at where we are. Above the state average, above the county average, in a great county academically in those metrics. I want to thank Peyton for the way she described the Battle of the Bay. I don't say that jokingly. I mean that. That's an example of how we talk about something that it's hard, right? It's hard when your school has a 10-game winning streak and everyone's looking for 11. And then it ain't anymore, right? Right? And you said it respectfully and you meant it. And I just, it just struck me tonight, the way you approached that, high class. And then because this is a civic, you know, opportunity for our students, I didn't want this to get left out of the conversation while you're all still here and paying such great attention to what's going on at the dais, hanging by every word. It's important to understand that these board meetings are not a public meeting. They're a governance meeting conducted in public, right? And the only thing that this board really has the authority to consider are those things in their jurisdiction, in their purview. If it was something about the space race or UFOs or whatever, that's not anything that they can do. And so to hear public comment about that misrepresents what they're here to do. And the Brown Act and the law does not require them to entertain any topic not in their jurisdiction, right? And so just as you watch these meetings, as you come and you wonder, how is it that folks get to come up? Why do they get to come up? What does the board do? That's all a part of it. So, thank you.
All right, we'll start at that end. Dr. Ursulou.
Yes. I think most of us were at the State of the Schools. So it was really exciting to hear the updates as well as the updates tonight. I think it's clear there's a long way to go. But everyone here is working so diligently to make everything better every day. So I think we're pretty lucky to have the team that we have. And that's all I have.
What happened in the last two weeks? So just wanted to say thank you to the Costa Mesa team for a fabulous State of the Schools breakfast. Principal Dr. Potness did a great job, her team did a great job. The kids were amazing. I hadn't seen, what's those little blue, the little, the overalls. I haven't seen overalls in so long. It was like, woo, bring in the overalls back. So it was great. It was good to see such good performances from our students, too. They did a fantastic job. Wanted to thank our friends over at Ducommun, who is a company in Orange County that came out and built 3,500 steam kits for the, or 350 steam kits for the kids at Pollerino. It was a great morning. We had families driving through the parking lot at Pollerino the whole time, picking up these great steam kits where they could go home and make engineering art activities. They were building airplanes and flying them through hula hoops. And it was a great morning, so thank you, Ducommun. Also, they gave Pollerino a $5,000 check. So thank you again, Ducommun. And then we also had the pleasure of attending the Costa Mesa District's liaison meeting. I did get to go over the entire presentation on Mesa Water with my son, who had no idea we had 3,500 fire hydrants in the city of Costa Mesa, but he knows now. And so that was very exciting. I think the best part about that was, you know, and getting to be at Pollerino over the weekend and seeing some of the challenges they have with parking. And the principal pointing out to me that she has 36 parking spots for 80 staff members. And I know we're addressing that with the facilities master plan, so that is not a comment on us. I know we are trying our hardest to do it, but to address it. But it was fun to say it in front of the mayor and have him go, oh, no, how do you do that? And I was like, oh, exactly, Mr. Mayor, how do you do that? So it was a good meeting. And I certainly will give anyone a full PowerPoint presentation on Mesa Water. They do a great job. I've almost got it fully memorized. So, thank you.
Let's see, I think we started off a couple of weeks ago at Newport Coast. I think with Trustee Crane, we did the walk with Newport Coast Elementary, walked a school day, which was fantastic. One of my very favorite events as a trustee so far was Harbor View's ABC Fashion Show. Probably one of my favorite things, talk about early literacy. I mean, everybody should have an ABC Fashion Show. And I was invited by the new principal, who is brilliant for inviting me to this event, because of course I think he's fantastic. So welcome to Randy Lampert. He's doing a fantastic job and has just, fits right in and is doing a fantastic job. I also attended the Girls Battle of the Bay volleyball game. We were, CDM had a better outcome on that game, again, by two points. I think by two points on that one, fifth game.
Nail biter.
Again, and the stadium filled, you know, on both sides. And I think the beauty of the Battle of the Bay Week between CDM and Newport Harbor wasn't the outcome of the game, but more the community, like you said, Peyton. It was 5,000 people. I mean, it was more than the UCLA games, not the USC games. But it was more people in the stadium than at the UCLA games. I mean, it was a college feel for sure. And that was the beauty of it. And the rally that you mentioned before, the technology. These were kids running this hour rally. And I, there was 100% engagement by every, by the entire campus, the entire, every high school student was in that auditorium. And there was, every child was engaged. It was unbelievable, the work that these kids are doing. Again, another, you would think that this was better than any USC or USC. ability to know, you know, your students and communicate that to the parents, I think is just, it's wonderful. So thank you for the extra time, teachers, this week.
Thank you. All right, so again, the State of the School breakfast, thank you to all who made this possible. I know Mesa, thank you for hosting, did a great job. Also Newport Mesa School Foundation and our marketing department, led by PIO, Annette Franco and team, thank you all. I even saw Bob over there setting up, so thank you, Bob. Also went to the Soy Open House, that was lovely, and got to see our student board member Victor Jimenez playing in a band. You play the bass, excellent. It was wonderful. Loved all the songs. I recognize all the songs, which is a good sign.
For him or for you?
That's true. That's good. We also, CDM hosted the Facilities Master Plan Town Hall, where all of our zone schools were represented. So that was great to see, get the input from the parent community and also the site leaders. So that was wonderful. And Battle of the Bay, of course, is, you know, all over town. JV football, that was great. Volleyball was a nail biter. Even our Back Bay students were involved, and they made T-shirts for Battle of the Bay through our coastline ROPCTE. They made these, they designed these T-shirts, and they manufactured them, and they still screened them and everything. For our, and they give them to our board and our, this is our kids basically proving, showing output right here in front of us, and we're getting the product and we're wearing the product. So good job, Back Bay, Montavista, Spider Lab. And let's see, we have Walk to School Day tomorrow at East Bluff Elementary, so I'll be there at 8 o'clock, ready to go. And we're also going to combine our Walk to School Day with Red, it is combined with Red Ribbon Week, and also hosting a mobile café, because the Newport Beach Police Department has been partnering with all of our elementary schools and encouraging the school sites to invite them over on campus. So that's just a wonderful collaboration with our NBDP. We love our SROs and the Police Department. They're very engaged in our community, and it shows. So thank you, NBDP. And lastly, I wanted to mention the fact that the event that happened at CDM, something that was very upsetting, the tagging of someone's locker made the news and all that. But what was most upsetting is the fact that our campuses need to be safe, and they need to be safe for all. And it's been a tough global environment, but to bring it home, it makes it a little more personal. So I want to commend the school site, Dr. Haley, and everyone else that was involved in forming the Interfaith Inclusion Council, and so that we can, we can change mindset, that we can make kids feel safe, that we believe in empathy, in walking in others' shoes, and respecting others that are different than us, and being civil in what we do on our campuses, which then will translate into what we do outside in our community. And I wanted to also just say how impressed I was by the student voice that was at our Interfaith Inclusion Council meeting, including Payton and a lot of the ASB kids, and also kids that are from our campus. So just always proud of the students' voice, always, always. We are not failing, Dr. Smith. In fact, we are producing kids that are absolutely amazing, and our future is safe in their hands. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, following up on that, I appreciate, Dr. Smith, what you shared, and I think one of the things that we have been reminded of in the past few years is just the importance of how we treat people and the words that we say in public and in private. And so I just wanted to remind everyone, I think we might still have them, I see the blue papers, they're on every seat that has our civility policy and our rules for conduct, and what is allowable and what is not allowable. And we feel very strongly that, yes, people have First Amendment rights, but not when it hurts and discriminates against other people. And so we actually have our board bylaw, 9323, which is what we go by, our rules, our policies, our, the things that we have decided upon, which, there's item six that says, "The board president may rule on the appropriateness of a topic. If that topic would be more suitably addressed at a later time, the president may indicate the time and place when that shall be presented." And so when we have folks that come, like, earlier, we'll be asking them in the future to come and have a meeting with us if they would like to. But this is a time and a place for us to focus on the education of the students and the families in our district, and that's our priority. We want to hear from you, and we are serving you. And I also just wanted to commend our amazing team for the facilities planning meeting that happened at Estancia. It was a very robust conversation, and it was just so lovely to see particularly our principals. Oftentimes, if you go to someone's campus, they're like, oh, it's okay, everything is great. And this was a lovely opportunity for folks to say, we literally have no parking spaces, or has anyone thought maybe we could have two-story administration offices? Things that, you know, we just haven't necessarily thought of before and we really need now that we have so much support staff. So it was lovely conversations. There's a lot of great ideas and visionary thinking going on, particularly from some of our parents who are also staff in our district. So that was a really wonderful opportunity, and I believe we have one more, we have one more, right? Or two? Two? We have?
Harbor?
Harbor and Estancia. We're Harbor, and then the one that's at the, can you tell us when they are, please?
Thank you. First and the eighth.
Which one is which, and what is the?
Harbor's next, on the first, and then on the eighth, we have the fifth meeting.
Here. Thank you. If anyone is listening and watching and wants to come to the, not just a zone-specific, but the whole district, I'm sure there will be some people who have a lot of ideas, so that is the meeting for them. And I just also wanted to comment, we had one email on item 18B6, but I thought it was important to just clarify, because there was some confusion. What is it? 18B6, B6 is? It is the Hazel Health, the telehealth mental health services. And it just disappeared, my comment just disappeared. Just a moment. My email literally disappeared in front of my eyeballs. Here we go. Because there was some confusion about this item, and so I just thought it was helpful to clarify that this is an organization that is partnering with schools in the county. 16 of 22 districts in Orange County are already using this service, and it's a partnership with CalOptima, because they know that it is really difficult right now to get an appointment of any kind, but particularly for mental health services, and that we know that those are very time-sensitive. So we're excited for them to contribute funding and to highlight this as a need. And this is approved by the Orange County Department of Education and was recommended to us by them. And I just wanted to clarify also that this specific program allows each district to consider and address minor consent differently. And in Newport Mesa, we have clearly stipulated in the contract that we will have parental consent, and I think that is important to note, that it is in about four different places within the agenda item, and that Newport Mesa parents and students are the ones that asked over and over for this need, for the support. And so we are trying to offer solutions and to create the opportunities for people to have family mental health services and also student mental health services with an intake that includes the parent. So I think it's important to include those facts. Facts are very important. And lastly, I was really excited to have the opportunity to speak for a few minutes at the State of the Schools. And one of the things that I think we are focusing overall is about the district trying to be unified and thinking together, what are the shared priorities and what are the shared goals that we can all work on together, despite our diverse values at times and our views. And so it was just a really lovely time to highlight all of the amazing gains and to see some of the reports from each of our departments really highlighted. So it'd be awesome. I think those went out publicly, some of those highlights, but I think we are continuing to get better and it was just a really wonderful time to focus on students and all of the gains that are happening and to hear ideas from students and others about how we can improve. So that is all, and it is 9:42, and we're, oh, 9:47?
Seven.
What?
Seven forty-two.
I'm sorry, 7:42. And we are ending very, very early, so that's great. Thank you.
They're in the sevens.
All right.